A special session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Thursday, September twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. At six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Here.
Commissioner Carr is not here yet. Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Okay, tonight's meeting is a special session, but normally we have public comments during special sessions, but this one's actually restricted by state statute for the purpose of adopting our annual budget. And so there won't be public comments tonight at this meeting. So what we're going to do is start into item number one, which is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, adopting the final millage rate for tax year two thousand twenty-two. Mister Herring is going to review the procedures that we need to go through, and then after that, Ms. Jacobs is going to read the resolution in its entirety. Then we'll go to public comments on that. Thank you. Go ahead. Your permission. Go ahead, Mister Herring.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Florida Statute two hundred point zero sixty-five sets the procedures for the adoption of the millage rate and budget. The final millage rate must be approved before the final budget. The final millage rate for tax year two thousand twenty-two is five point three seven, the same as the previous year. The final millage rate of five point three seven is twelve point three nine percent above the rollback rate of four point seven seven eight one. The rollback rate is a rate that would provide the same dollar amount of revenues as the previous year. The increase in the over the rollback rate is being used to fund personnel and operating costs, and that's the millage rate.
Thank you, Mister Herring. Ms. Jacobs, we're going to read the resolution by title.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, adopting the final millage rate for tax year two thousand twenty-two. Whereas a public hearing was held on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P M. to adopt the final millage rate. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, that one, the Advalora Millage Rate for Taxure two thousand twenty-two of the City of Tarpin Springs is hereby established at five point three seven zero zero, a twelve point three nine percent increase over the rollback rate of four point seven seven eight one. Two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions here of as required by law. That is the reading of Resolution twenty dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three in its entirety.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Yeah, that was supposed to be by its entirety. Are there any public comments on the millage rate? Any public comments? I T., are there any remote access comments on the millage rate?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, we didn't receive any emails today?
We have none.
We have none. Okay. Commissioners, any comments from the commission?
Commissioner Kuyas? Yes, Mayor. I know the last, the first reading, I did support the millage rate, but I'm not going to support it this time around. I think it's a step in the direction where we should let everybody know sometime next year when budget season comes around that we should work together to try to reduce it a couple hundreds and have that plan. I think by reducing a couple hundreds every so, you know, every year or so, it would not put that big of a burden onto finance to balance the budget. And I think there are creative ways where we can balance that budget from income that's coming in in the near future. So I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
We need a motion.
I need a motion, a second. Thank you.
Motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item number two, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three. Similarly, Mister Herring's going to review the procedures, and then the city clerk will read the resolution in its entirety.
Yes, the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for the whole city is seventy-five million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, three oh three. An increase of six million, five hundred twelve thousand, six seventy-one, or nine point four percent over the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. The majority of the increase is related to capital outlay and budgeting for the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's the budget.
Thank you, Mister Herring. Ms. Jacobs, can you read the resolution in its entirety, please?
Resolution twenty dash twenty-two dash thirty-four. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. Whereas a public hearing was held on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P M. to adopt a final budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, that one, the City of Tarpin Springs annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three is hereby finally adopted. And two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions here of as required by law. That is the reading of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four in its entirety.
Thank you. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on the budget? None from anybody present. I T., are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve in a second, please.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four.
Okay, are there any commission comments?
It was in a second, a second.
Is there any commission comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. That concludes a special session for the regular budget. Now we're going to go into the a special session for the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. We adjourned that section at six thirty-seven. And now called to order the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpin Springs on Thursday, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty-seven P M. Roll call, please.
Chair Vaticiotes?
Here.
Vice Chair Lund?
Here.
And I did get a message from Commissioner Carr that he is running behind. Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Okay, we're going to take the same approach here. It's the same thing. There won't be any public comments. This is a special session. Again, it's for the adoption of a budget. So we're going to go straight to item number one, which is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero-three, adopting the final budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two dash twenty which is for the Community Redevelopment Agency. Mister Herring, would you review the, or actually go through the procedures required by state law?
Okay. Yes, Mayor. The final CRA budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three is seven hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars. An increase of one hundred forty-one thousand, six twenty-nine, or twenty-one point nine percent over the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. The increase is due to the taxable values in the CRA, increasing fourteen point six one percent, which is being used, being to put towards CRA projects, and that's the CRA budget.
Thank you, Mister Herring. Ms. Jacobs, could you read the resolution in its entirety, please?
This is CRA Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-three. A resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Whereas a public hearing was held on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P M. to adopt a final budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, that section one, the Community Redevelopment Agency's annual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three is hereby finally adopted. Section two, the city staff is hereby directed to notify all pertinent governmental agencies of the provisions here of as required by law. That is the reading of CRA Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-three in its entirety.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this?
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bayshore Drive. There has to be a correction. Today is Wednesday, not Thursday. Should anybody come and question the tape and come back to the commission and say we were wrong. Let's please correct Wednesday over Thursday. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I'm going to correct the title to calling the meeting to order. And that is, as I stated, it was Thursday. It's actually Wednesday, and that's for September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, which the date was correct. So we got that's public comments. Are there any other public comments? I T., are there any remote access public comments?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, are there any emails on this? Okay. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Kuyas. Roll call, please. I'd like that motion in a second, please.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh-three.
Second.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lund?
Yes.
Chair Vaticiotes?
Yes. That concludes the agenda for the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting, and we're going to adjourn at six forty-one. You ready? I called to order the work session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Wednesday, September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, at six forty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Here.
Commissioner Carr is not here yet. Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Okay. This work session, we've got two items. One are the charter amendments that we had some discussion on at the last meeting. And in our backup, I presented the original memorandum, which we had a last meeting, and then I provided an additional memorandum with regard to backup material for both the Planning and Zoning Commission and also for this new item concerning the sidewalk fund that was brought up at the commission meeting. I think we were okay with everything except for those two items, and of course, this is, this is not just limited to those two items. So what I'd like to do is, I was waiting for, I invited Mister Seaman here, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he's running a little late, I guess. Let's go ahead and get started on these charter amendments, and I'm going to go to the commission. And we'll just go right down the line. Commissioner Lund, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lund.
Yeah, it's a pretty voluminous document. So I have several comments, and I'm sorry it's going to take a little time to get through here. Before I do that, can I make another comment towards the planning and zoning board? So last week at our commission meeting, I had made some inadvertent and disparaging remarks concerning the planning and zoning board and their meetings, and I wanted to sincerely apologize for my comments. They were unprofessional, disrespectful, and unwarranted. To those who are understandably upset by my comments, again, I apologize, and trust that we continue to work together in support of the City of Tarpin Springs. Thank you. Back to the matter at hand. There was some question, I guess this should be directed towards market this particular time, whether the staff, we had discussed increasing the sidewalk fund, and whether the staff could actually handle such an increase? Do they have the capacity to do, say, four hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalk work during a given year?
Well, I suppose we could contracting out and stuff, but I think we're pretty, with what we have this year, and we don't have our, just probably come into one of the next meetings and stuff. I think we'll be a long way along with this year's ones. I, you know, I'm a little reluctant on that item to change it. It's so new, and really with, with the two hundred thousand plus some we had committed from the last year, we're probably doing close to three hundred thousand dollars worth of sidewalks this year coming up. So it's something if you want to look at, but I don't think it's essential to get on this from a staff, in my view, and essential to get on the charter for this time. It may be something to consider later and stuff, but just from the staff aspect, I think we're going to be well along. We've gone a long way. The claims, you know, are not as much as they used to be, as many as they used to be. So we're working that way, obviously. You know, we could contract, you know, contract and get more done, but, you know, again, it's a board decision, but I don't think for this charter time and stuff and on our, in our, you know, opinion that it's, that it's something that needs to be done for this charter.
Okay, well, yeah. One of my concerns, of course, with the sidewalk fund was, was I'm an impatient fellow, and I want to make sure that our sidewalks are walkable by everyone. A corollary concern was, was basically the amount of trip and falls we've had and litigation because of that and the costs associated with it. And I, I got a breakdown from you, and it wasn't too excessive. I'd still prefer it to be none, but, but, so that's just a comment. Moving on. Okay. There's no pagination on this, but in section policy two point four three, Commercial General, we have definition of secondary uses. One of them is included as residential, which requires a conditional use for review. I wanted to, underneath that, understand what we meant by transferring in density rights, and also how that would affect if we, if we took conditional uses away from this as far as residential use, how that would affect future mixed-use requirements. And I don't even know who's going to answer that.
I'm a little. Renee is here, could maybe take a stab at it off the cuff if you wanted.
I'm sorry, Renee, a lot of this might be coming back to you, and we've had some discussions.
What section of the charter?
It's not in the charter. I think Commissioner, or Mayor, if I could just jump in. You provided that entire backup from a lot of discussions that took place, so I think what, what to focus on for charter amendments was there's a small section in that voluminous set of backup where the, where the Planning and Zoning Board and the, and the staff discussed the options of what could potentially go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their authority to review. If you want to cut to the chase, what all that really said was, or what our conclusions were, would be things that typically that the board adopts by resolution, so that would be site plans and conditional uses. So you got a whole bunch of backup that was all surround, there was a lot of issues being discussed by the Planning and Zoning Board.
I'm sorry, I'm just doing this by road.
Yes. Okay.
Obviously, from, from a perspective of charter amendments, I think one of the things we were discussing was strategic plan, whether it should be updated periodically. I tend to agree with that. I'm not quite sure how everybody feels about the term, but, but I'm fine with that. And as far as budget priorities, I think we should start discussing them at the beginning of the year, so that we can get residents involved in helping us prioritize what's a priority for them.
Yeah, let me, let me go through this, just to, just to have a little more information out there. In the last meeting, we talked about the, the, under section eight of the charter, specifically subsection G, which updates the comprehensive plan. We've just adopted the strategic plan, and we're talking about including the strategic plan, memorializing it in the same section with regard to the comprehensive plan and its update, and synchronized along with the the comprehensive plan. The other item was the budget priorities, and the last Charter Revision Commission delineated many responsibilities of the commission. And even though there were several attempts to have a meeting that would establish the priorities, that was never done. So I think from my perspective, I thought it would be important, and we talked about that, to ensure that there would be a public meeting where residents would have their input to the priorities. Because as the way it is right now, the entire budget is worked up, and the only time you get it, the public gets a chance to talk about anything on the budget is tonight and the last budget, after the budget's complete, balanced, everything is. So it'd be real hard for the residents to have any input to the budget. So it would be establishing priorities early on, which we've talked about in the past, but now actually requiring it, so there would be no excuse for not doing that. That's what Vice Mayor Lund is talking about right now. And then there's section twelve, which is the zoning powers, where it identifies the Planning and Zoning Board strictly as an advisory board. And there was a whole lot of discussion, workshops on a variety of issues that Ms. Vincent, our Planning Director, described, but then there was a part of that, of, of the Planning and Zoning Commission being able to approve a couple of things that are minor compared to some of the larger projects, for example, the site plans. Now, the site plans inherently would be the smaller projects, because the largest site plans are going to come in through some kind of a developer's agreement, some kind of a residential plan development, or some other larger project that's going to require a couple of different legislative acts, which are in the purview of the commission. So it'd be a smaller site plan, and then conditional use is very similar to the one we dealt with last time. And, and why would we want to do that? Mister Seaman is here, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I'm just going to stop with the commission comments with Vice Mayor Lund and ask Mister Seaman to come forward and make a few comments on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But the idea behind that is to short, shorten the process, the approval process of when people come in, cheapen it as well, of to apply for conditional use or a site plan on something small. And then the last, and in order for that to happen, the charter would have to be amended to allow the Planning and Zoning Board to have some independence. But then those, those actual responsibilities would be delineated by ordinance. And then also, there, as part of that, there would be an appeal process that would be worked out as well within that ordinance. The last item that I had was residency, which the last Charter Revision Commission put forward a charter amendment recommendation to relax the residency requirements, and that failed. But what it in fact did was leave the, the text of that particular charter section in place, which is section twenty. And in there, there's a couple of positions, such as the Development Review Services Director, that doesn't, that doesn't exist, and then there's some new departments that should be in there that are not. And this one could probably wait, I just showed this. Initially, I thought it might be a good idea, but it could probably wait until the next Charter Revision Commission, which is going to be convened, and I worked out the numbers in eighteen months on that. And then the, the other one that we brought forward, or at least Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carr and Vice Mayor Lund wanted to talk about was the Street White Sidewalks Fund of increasing the amount from a hundred thousand to two hundred, but that's a match. That's just not money that's going to go directly out of the fund of the city. The city will have to, if it goes from one hundred to two hundred thousand, and everything is left in place, two hundred thousand are going to have to come from other monies in order to match the two hundred thousand dollars that would come from that fund. And it's not simply budgeting the two hundred thousand, it's actually encumbering the two hundred thousand. That, that was real critical. In other words, it has, actually has to be spent before that two hundred thousand dollars comes out of the fund to the city for additional work. So, and that's, in my second memorandum, I made the comment about the capacity. And the other, only other comment I want to make there is I do know that the county's slowing down their project program, their capital project program, because basically they're competing for the same contractors. Everybody's competing for the same contractors in Pinellas County. We've got a lot of money out there, a lot of projects that are being done, a lot of roadwork, sidewalks, concrete, everything, and there, and there aren't any new contractors. So basically, it does two things. One, we're increasing the cost of these projects if we want to have them done right away. And two, I think sometimes these contractors are getting stretched thin, and they get into trouble on these projects, like we, the situation we've got on Seabreeze Drive and also Gross Avenue here, which we're still trying to work and also Gross Avenue here, which we're still trying to work out a solution on that. So, that's the summary of what we did the last time, and, um, I'm gonna, if, if, if the Commission doesn't mind, I'd like to invite, um, Chairman Seaman to come forward and, um, uh, make his comments, if he'd like, and, and, um, our rules of procedure provides for this to happen, and I did check that with the, uh, City Manager of this, uh, today, and, and Mr. Seaman is making his comments in capacity, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, Mr. Seaman, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for having me here tonight, uh, members of the BOC. I do wanna be clear, it's, we're just talking about conditional use permits and minor site plan review. I think almost any site plan review that's for a project that's very large would require other approvals that, that would require your review as well, but certainly there could be a threshold established also, if that was a concern. But there's really two primary reasons for this. The first one is just to shorten the process for the residents. I've, I've been on the other side of the microphone a lot of times, uh, as a landscape architect and, and a urban planner on projects in my past, and it's, it's really frustrating when you have a tiny, tiny project, and it takes weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks to get through the review process. So, cutting about a month out of the review process on very small projects would be a great benefit to our residents, I feel like. And I don't, I don't think it takes anything away, uh, from the BOC's authority, certainly. The second reason is, you guys have a lot of really major issues on your table these days, and taking a, a few of these smaller projects, uh, off of your table, and, and allowing the, the P&amp;Z Board to, uh, review those and to deal with them, would save you, you know, not a lot of time, but significant time in some of your meetings that are too long already. And the, the other factor I wanna point out is it's, it's only really asking the public if they want to make this change also. It's not, it's not approving the change at this point either. It's just giving the public a chance to comment. Let's see. And I, I would point out that, over the years, the P&amp;Z Board has been a group of very well-qualified professionals, typically. I mean, we've had architects, engineers, attorneys, uh, you know, and, and any number of people from the community, and contractors. So, it is made up of people that have a good understanding of the issues that are involved, particularly in these smaller projects. Anyway, I, I don't wanna overstay my time, but, uh, just, I, I think myself and the members of the P&amp;Z Board would, would like for you to consider and, and give the, uh, members of the public the opportunity to, uh, state their opinion on, uh, these two situations.
Hang on, Mr. Seaman. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Seaman?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'm, I'm actually in support of both objectives, both, uh, easing the pain for our residents to get permits, and easing the load on the, on the Board for having to review it all. Uh, one of my questions was, be how we would go about qualifying what is deemed, uh, more complicated versus simple, um, and, you know, would that be size, density, conditions, wetland impact, or how do we codify that? Because I think, um, you know, being able to codify that would give us the parameters for allowing you to do what you're requesting.
Well, uh, can Mr. Kuskudas comment? He has a thought on that.
Yeah.
He's my, my vice chair.
Mr. Kuskudas, just for the, just to keep this honest, as far as our rules, could you just take 30 seconds and confer with Mr. Seaman and?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kuskudas.
Yep. One of the things-
Let Mr. Seaman finish up. Thank you.
The thought was, and it might be a way to do it that would simplify it, is, is, uh, even if you still heard those items, but treated them as consent agenda items, and, and you could, uh, choose, if you were concerned about an item, you could pull it, just like you do on the consent agenda, but otherwise, it would go right through, and you wouldn't have to spend the time to deal with it.
We, I mean, that, that would be something that we could explore, and it's gonna take some homework as far as whether that would work or not.
The, the other thought that, that I kinda had on that is it, I mean, it, it could be based on a threshold of acreage, because, uh, large projects typically involve larger acreages. I'm not sure what the critical number is. Uh, I think our, our staff could probably help us a lot in determining that. But the other thing I think that's gonna happen is, most of the larger projects are gonna require some other sort of approval, above and beyond just a conditional use, or, or a, uh, uh, site plan review.
Uh, just for the record, tonight is not for the purpose of actually deciding that we're definitely gonna go to referendum on this thing. It's just to get the idea if there, if this Commission would have some support, and then that would allow, uh, the City Manager and Ms. Vincent to put something together between now and the time that the, uh, referendum questions are, are required. And then, um, I think we do need, we will be going to public comment on those as well.
They would go to public hearings, yes.
Right, so, um, I think Mr. Seaman hit it right. It's not necessarily whether these are great ideas, or you might not think they're great ideas, or maybe even you might think they're bad ideas. It's just whether you think it would be worth the residents to have a say on it, um, uh, based on what you've heard on the campaign trail, and, and when you talk to residents out on the street with current projects and issues that we've got. So, um, with that, Mr. Seaman, was there anything else? Oh, let me ask, is there any other Commissioners that have questions for Mr. Seaman?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I think this Board does a great job, and, and I, I appreciate everything you guys do, but I'm worried about not having the same qualified individuals, such as yourselves, on future P&amp;Z Boards, to be making those tough decisions, and, you know, I don't know how long everyone expects to be on the Board, but it's, you know, something five, 10 years down the road. We could see a whole new Board with, uh, you know, different idea or different, um, research and material, you know?
I mean, and I don't, I don't mean to be flippant about it, but that kinda comes back to you guys, 'cause you, you're appointing the future Commissioners, and, you know, as long as you guys are here, I'm pretty comfortable that the, the Commission will have the same well-qualified people, uh, you know. But it's sort of the, sort of the same thing, uh, with you guys and, and with us. If change happens, we can't control that.
We're, we're only on, up here for six years, current, you know, steady, so, you know, things can happen real fast in an election year, or different people coming off the Board and, and coming on. That's my biggest concern.
Well, something, something I have seen done in other places, uh, they actually set aside, like, and, and, don't quote me on exactly which professions, but you pick a profession, like, there has to be one architect on the Planning Commission, there has to be one engineer on the Commission, there has to be one contractor on the Commission, and then maybe two kind of at-large members or something is a way also to address that, that I've seen done in other communities.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman.
Commissioner Eisner, anything? A question for Mr. Seaman.
Well, I, I don't have a question, I have comments after, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seaman.
Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
And thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, let me, Mr. Seaman, if you could get up one more. I do have one brief ques- as, as far as, um, the, if, you're gonna speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission now, as far as the, um, whether there was a consensus or somewhat of a broad, uh, approval for taking this approach of giving some independence to Planning and Zoning Commission from the rest of your colleagues?
This, this was one of several fairly important points that, that we brought up in the workshop that we had, uh, back in April, I believe it was, and, and everybody was in accord that, that it was something we would like to see, if it could possibly be done. There has, in the past, been dissent, and it's not related to you guys, honestly, but with the way some of our decisions were pretty much ignored in the past, and we came pretty close to losing some very valuable members, uh, because of that. And this was just one thing that would help, and it's, it's not an ego trip for us, really, believe me. It's, it's more about serving the public more effectively. But having some independence to act on certain types of things would, would also be good for the Board members, or the Commission members, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Let's see. Vice Mayor Lunt, are you, do you have any other comments? Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. So, let me, uh, just give you my opinion on the Planning and Zoning. There's no guarantee that no matter what Board is up making decisions, we always have the final decision to, if there's issues there, is removing anybody that's on the Board. Um, if there's issues or problems, but the Board of Adjustment has the same, um, jurisdiction. They make final decisions, Code Enforcement makes final decisions, Heritage Board makes final decisions. As long as the, uh, protocol for the decision-making is not something that is, which I've heard, that's why I didn't have any questions, that they're, um, just smaller decision-making, I, I don't have a problem with that. I look back to how many agenda items were back in the 90s, in the early 2000s, and, you know, most of the Boards had 15 agenda items at a time. We're now sitting always at 20, 25, and 30 agenda items, so going back to what, um, Mr. Seaman said, we, we do need to streamline this and see how it works. Uh, we could always, um, first of all, we, we're not making a decision on it, but we, we could try it and see how it works. I do feel comfortable with watching the Planning and Zoning Board and the decisions they make. I think that all of the Boards need training, um, as far as, uh, protocol and all that. So, that, that's where I stay with that. Um, I, I am impressed with everybody that's on there. I think we always have to keep alternates, uh, that's a valuable thing. We have to make sure that alternates, um, come to all the meetings, because that's how they, you know, move forward. So, um, that would be where I, I'm very much for giving them some autonomy in the decision-making. Okay?
Thank you. Um, we're just gonna finish this part up, and then we'll open it up to the other stuff. Commissioner Cullias, do you have any other comments on this?
I am worried about six to 10 years out, you know, just like I said, I think we have good structure right now, good foundation on all our Boards, but, uh, depending on, and I know we're gonna fix our land use codes and our conditional use codes to allow certain projects to be followed in a certain way, so, um, as long, as long as we get all that straightened out, then, uh, I'm for it. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I, I do wanna completely emphasize, these are small projects. This isn't giving the Planning and Zoning Commission full autonomy, and there's, and their, um, their responsibilities, their authority is actually re- regulated by state statute. Actually, ours are. We can't, we can't give up what our state mandated responsibilities are, which is legislative. So, um, and for myself, I don't have an issue with letting the residents decide, and, um, uh, they'll have a sense of whether it works, and, and quite frankly, um, we've got a number of Boards, as, uh, I think Commissioner Eisner said, that already are completely autonomous. None of them come to us, and if you wanna appeal to them, you go to the Circuit Court.
That's right.
So, I, I think that there's some, some other safeguards that can be built in this, and certainly anything that could streamline things a little bit would be better. Let me go back to the other items. Um, let me, um, you've heard, I think, from us, so that'll give you enough direction. Our, our rules, our rules of procedure for work sessions, we could, even though we're not allowed to take formal votes on specific things, we can vote, uh, to give the, uh, City Manager direction, but I said I would ask him if he's comfortable with what he hears, and I think you're comfortable with this one. Uh, let's go to the other items. Vice Mayor Lunt, let's start over again.
Okay, so the other items in your memo, as far as, well, we discussed the sidewalk improvement fund, and I think if you think that's restrictive because of the match, I'm good with that. I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner? Go. Gotcha.
Touche. Um, so, first, the sidewalk. Um, I would like to keep the sidewalk fund the way it is, um, and I don't wanna go into, um, adding funds to it and trying to go outside. I wanna keep that in-house. Um, also because, uh, we have an issue right now with the shortage of contractors. And, um, we don't need to have more, I'd rather be working with our own internal staff than going outside and then having people start projects, um, and us going into having to finish a project that they didn't finish, which we have enough of right now. So, that, I wanna stay with that. One of the things that I was gonna speak about was the residency. I don't honestly have an issue with regi-, you know, with redi- residency. I know people think that if you are from the, if you live in the town, that you're going to treat it better. Um, I personally think it's truthfully up to the person. Um, we went through that with the, um, with the election. If you were born here, you're gonna take a better care of the, uh, town. I don't buy that either. Um, I think if you have, you know, some good work habits, and, you know, you were brought up to do the right thing, you're gonna do it. Um, if you weren't, you know, we replace you. So, um, I don't really think that's a big deal.
Yeah, just, just for clarity, we're not talking about changing the residency, just the titles of the Department Heads that are in there. The res- the residency issue would be dealt with, that if, if the future City Charter Revision Commission wanted to, they would deal with it. This was just for changing the names, but the City Manager believes he can work with what's there right now. Yeah, that, that's all.
The budget, I believe, should be done, um, prior with the residents' input. I personally didn't like the fact that we got to hear, um, I want transparency. I ran on transparency, so I'd like to hear what the, um, residents have to say before we make the decisions, not after. I know they put us in office to make those decisions, but I still would like to hear the, the comments, whether they be good or bad, so. Um, and the strategic plan, I do believe, I, I wouldn't go for a full, um, review on it, but update is what I would recommend, something, and, and also just to see if, how it's, um, how it's panning out. So, that's the route I would take, okay?
Yeah.
That's pretty much it.
That's good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Cullias?
I agree with Commissioner Eisner regarding the, the sidewalks and being able to do that in-house. As far as the, the budget and increasing it, if we can show that we're actually producing that, having that carryover, that amount that we're putting in, and, and we can improve all the sidewalks that, that need to be added in, then I am for it, but I would like to keep it in-house. The standards for the review for the conditional uses, I'm, I'll leave that to staff, and, uh, you, Mayor, as well as others, to help, uh, update those codes, to, to get them where they should be. Regarding the connections to public water and annexation, uh, those codes seem to me-
Those are in the, uh, the, Ms. Vincent, could you clarify that again? Basically, there, the parts that we're talking about, I, we put in there, I think it was pages 28 through 53. That was in that memorandum that was supposed to zero in, not the entire memorandum. This had to do with just those things that would require- This had to do with just those things that would require the charter to be amended. Ms. Vincent, do you want to add anything else to that?
No, we're, we're, the other things that, those other things that y'all were kind of keying in on, we're working on those amendments now, and you'll be seeing those coming back to the Planning and Zoning Board and Board of Commissioners over the next three months or so.
We'd already gone through this memorandum.
We had, yes.
At a commission meeting previously, and we've given the city manager and the planning director direction on this thing. So we'll have a full public meeting on that with resident input. So, go ahead.
Changing the department head director names, I support that. And the strategic plan, I think we should be able to update it at least every two years. That way, we can give one, one member on the board at least one time to crack at it and update some more, if not two times, depending on the cycle list. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the key to the strategic plan was that the comprehensive plan is required by law. And at one time, it was required to be updated every five years, completely updated with what's called an year report, evaluation, analysis report, or something like that. And, and then 2011, the law changed, no longer requiring that to be updated. And it was really left up to the cities to whether they updated it or not. Some cities kept up with it, others didn't. And the difference is, the strategic plan is not required by law. We had one in the early to late 90s. It continued on for a little while, and then, for whatever reason, it just, it became forgotten and out of sight, out of mind. And we really haven't, and you've heard that before, everybody ran for office as far as what the residents' involvement in city government was. It wasn't that good, you know, people, we couldn't get people to come, you'd hear this, we couldn't get them to come to the commission meetings, the whole thing. So I think the general idea is that that's good, but it's still our responsibility to know what the residents want. So this strategic plan was a way of actually going out into the community, creating a vision of what the residents want the community to look like and what their priorities are, so that we don't wind up with these little pet projects that you didn't see any in this budget this year. You had some in the previous, but not in this budget. So I think that, from that perspective, was a success. So it would be an update. We've adopted the strategic plan. We're going to be implementing it. And in the implementation, we're going to find some issues that don't quite mesh with the comprehensive plan as it's being developed, along with the character districts that are going to be coming along, both for the Union Academy neighborhood and also the Greek Town, and then also, of course, the Sustainability Action Plan. All those have to work together, and we may find some tweaks, updates, if you will, for the strategic plan that has to be done. Now, it's kind of the same argument with regard to the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we just need to make sure that whoever goes on Planning and Zoning Commission has got the talent, which we've done pretty well since we've been in office of putting those individuals on there. We, I think we appointed an attorney, an engineer. We've got another attorney. We've got a contractor, a landscape architect, and his specialization is environmental issues as well. So I think we've done real well. But it's the same thing with the, the strategic plan as well, the implementation of it. We have to kind of be mindful and with the characteristics and all those other things that that we, that we have that as a requirement, so that's not forgotten. That's all. If it's not a requirement that I, my suspicion is, long-term, it'll slowly dwindle away. As a matter of fact, City Manager Lacorice will tell you, when I was City Manager, same thing with him, we probably have 10 or 15 stormwater studies stacked together somewhere. Every two years, we do a stormwater study on what's important, and we spend $100,000, $50,000. And one stormwater report tells you the same thing as the previous one did, and it gives you the same priorities as what needs to be done first, which is the most important. So the idea is that whatever plan we have, it's great, but we actually have to implement it and follow it. So I'm hoping that that would be the kind of language that we introduce in the, in the charter, for a charter amendment for this time around, which would be the March 2023 election. Now, I, I don't know if I shortchanged anybody as far as comments. Anybody have any other follow-up comments?
I sort of do. I think what we're discussing here is basically taking a policy that should have been done and making it so that it has to be done.
That's exactly right.
And I think, especially because it concerns citizen involvement and better transparency on behalf of the council, I think that's a necessary thing, that we should continue to do those kinds of things.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask Seaman Lacorice, do you have any questions, or do you want clarification on anything?
No, I just have one comment to make, and it's on the budget priority thing. Obviously, getting into the charter sets it in stone, and it's good, so I'm not talking about not putting it. But I structured the budget every year based on the input of the commission. I probably changed it three, four times in the last six-year of orders. We changed the order where the, where the budget advisory looked at things because of input every meeting. So regardless, even if this was put on and failed the charter, if you gave me direction to move those, to do those public hearings at the beginning of the process in my budget process, that's not something I'm autonomous on the budget process. I go by the direction of the board and changes. But still, it's not, it's not telling you not to put it in the charter and do it, but, but with your direction from this year, you know, I would do it next year. And again, if for some reason it failed the charter vote, you could still give me direction, and we could put that public input at the beginning of the process anyway. But it's always good to memorialize things in the charter if you, again, if you want it to carry on. So, so it's good to do. But again, you know, we can change the budget process. This is the first time you've had this budget process. So any input on changes, I'd do those on the direction of the board. So I just want to make that point. But again, as he'll tell you, if you don't put it in the charter, it's not set in stone, and sometimes it doesn't happen, and it's not there, and that's one way to solidify it and put it in stone.
I, no, that's it. And I remember the two years that I was the city commissioner, there were conversations both years that we really need to establish priorities. And that was, okay, that was the first year. The second year, it still wasn't done, but you heard the same question. We need to establish priorities sometimes. And it's really frustrating, really, when we wind up at this point, and we've got the budget. And by the way, it wasn't any different when I was city manager either. Generally, these meetings happen, I don't think the law changed, state statutes, we still had to have these meetings, but they were always at the very end. After the budget was already set and balanced, the residents would come in, and fortunately, our residents are a little more vocal right now. And I think you've seen a couple of emails that have come in since the budget was finished, where they're asking for some additional funds. And we're going to have to deal with that here in the near future. But the idea is exactly what the city manager was describing, was to set this in stone so future commissions, like Vice Mayor Laun said, it's a nice policy that needs to be done, but now it's going to require it to be done. And that is the exact reason why the last Charter Revision Commission delineated all the responsibilities of the city commission, because they felt, and it was no slight on the commission, that it was a little bit, it wasn't clear as to whether the commission understood their responsibilities. So they actually wanted the residents to have an opportunity to tell the commission what their responsibilities were. And that was done, the Charter Revision Commission was 2019, and the charter amendments were approved during the election of 2020. And that's, so is just two years ago. So, yes.
It's very interesting. Commissioner Koulias and I were in Florida League of Cities, and I remember, we were in a room, and the speaker had asked to all of the mayors and commissioners in the room, and said, please raise your hand if you have enough money to spend, and, you know, you don't have the need for any more money. And there wasn't a hand that was raised in the room, because every city suffers. And what I wanted to share was, you know, and I agree with Commissioner Koulias, I'd love to reduce, I'm sure you would too, and you would as well, reduce the millage rate. But when we got to look at this budget and what we needed to do, I mean, I don't want to say that prior boards didn't. All I know is that there was more than I wanted to see needing to get done. And there's no way to do it without having money. So unless you're removing something, you can't, you can't lower a millage rate. So I'm, I'm with you, Commissioner, on wanting to reduce the tax rate for the residents, but not if we have what we have to get repaired and to keep the city up to date. So, but we don't have any extra money, believe me when I tell you that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
I think I got direction on the items.
On all this particular agenda item. Okay. So we're going to move on to the properties. Do you want to do this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to take this chance, especially because these are also some things that may need to be battle language for the election, the different properties that we've talked about, gone out for appraisals for, and as you know, there's a backlog on appraisals. So the timeframe is double or more than we used to get them. We still don't have a very important appraisal, and that's, let me talk about the one we don't have first, and that's on that property by Stauffer. We knew that was going to be the toughest appraisal for the appraiser to do. So we don't have, have that one yet, but that still might be something we need to talk about and talk about some language on there. And again, I'll just go over all of them, and then we'll come back to, to the comments. The, the Henry Ross property, which is a property on Florida Avenue, which is very important to the stormwater system out there and to help us with some flooding, we had just got that estimate back. It comes within 135% of the appraised value, what the original number that, that they had proposed to buy it for, $700,000. So, you know, usually an offer is at 125, but we have asked them if they would confirm the 700,000, because it's well on the, you know, it's, it's on, it's on for sale now, I think at 1.1 million. You see the appraisals in the report, but maybe even by next being, we were waiting for there, we've already asked them, and we'll see what they come back with. And you'll see there's an item on Tuesday night's agenda that's a maybe item. It's on there because maybe, maybe, for instance, on some of these properties, or we need some direction, they may say they accept it, and then I'll probably be bringing to you to get your decision if you want to go forward to do the sales contract on that. But it came very close to, if we were to, you know, our thoughts of offering 125%, their figure's 135%. So we're waiting for the answer on that one. So that might be the first one that, that we get to you on. And again, that's a very, we've had several people come to inquire to us about building, trying to fit some homes on that property. If you notice on Florida Avenue with the Henry Ross things, you know, you're sticking a bunch of homes in the middle of nice land that, that we need to preserve, and especially when the preservation of that land is going to help us with stormwater. So we don't want these, these four, three or four houses, or what they're trying to, some developers who looking, inquiring before they make an offer on it, they're really bad uses of that land off there. So, so hopefully, the other thing is to take it off the market for that happening and losing some more preserved land, and plus, it's such a benefit to those residents out there for stormwater. If they come back and with that 700,000 offer, I will be bringing it to you to consider to put on a referendum item. As we thought, the Cacoris Park property came back at 160,000 appraisal. Again, this is a property, if you know, I've probably been negotiating on for maybe five years. We started on the other end of the owner. We started at 2.1 million. Five years ago, probably three years ago, we're at 1.7 million. We got down a little closer. The last time, he was maybe in the 700, 800,000 range, and we know, we advised him to get an appraisal and bring it to us to talk further. And we know he did this because the gentleman we were trying to get the, to do the appraisal on it, said he couldn't do it because he'd done one from the property owner, which never came to us, which tells me it might have said the same thing about the value of his land. And again, this is a very important green, whatever we do with a green space or do with it in the sponge docks, you know, this is probably one of our last areas down there for us to preserve. So again, this would be an area, I'd probably come back to you if we can't make an agreement to possibly look at some other options of us possibly pursuing, taking the land. But hopefully, they've got this, they, he does have a lawyer that is speaking to us. We're dealing with his claim that, that we made the property useless because we changed recently the status of it to recreation, and Renee did some great research, and we're way back 30 years. We didn't make a change in the last years of that. It's been 30 years or more we're going back that it's been that. The claim is, he doesn't have any density on the property because we designated his resident. So we've given that to the lawyer to say, you know, your point is not valid, although it may be a negotiating point to bring the property a little higher than we think. But right now, we've made the, the $200,000 offer, which is 125% of the appraised value to the attorney. We're awaiting hers, and again, it's possibly something, we could have the answer by Tuesday or, you know, October. I mean, the importance of this is, we have to, we have to get these items, the ones we've talked about with the charter, and these, we have to have meetings in November, especially on the charter, two readings, and, and by the first meeting of December, we have to pass these for the charter language. So, so we run out of time crunch on, on these properties and stuff. The other property, the spoil site property, the one that came in, the first one that came in to us, because we'd ordered it a little earlier, of 3.2 million, we've talked to the Stammas family, and their number is, is way beyond our means in the $5 million area. However, we've talked, the mayor and I have talked, and there may be some value. I'm going to deal with Paul Smith. We talked about the issue of the, of the, of the water plan and more solar. They may, there may be some interest of looking and seeing if we can get a portion. Obviously, to spend big money, like in the 2, 3 millions, for the permanent spoil site would be something to do, but maybe there's another use of the city. We may want a smaller piece. And again, one of the things is, they plan on possibly moving their business there and stuff, so, but right now, it's priced out of our, our league, and we've discussed it. So, but again, I still want to come back to you, maybe if we've got some other ideas and they're willing for what they want to do with the property, if there's maybe some portions that we could utilize, maybe for addition or solar field, maybe for something else. So we're going to still look at that and get back with you. And again, I'll open it now on all of those for any comments or, or questions. That, I just want to give you the update where we are so far, especially that this is another item. Again, the Cacoris Park, if it goes under the 350, it doesn't have to go to referendum, but definitely the, definitely the Ross property and any of these other properties we have, that's probably the only piece of, of property. And then the only other thing I wanted, I do want to bring up and to talk a little bit here about, there's that piece of land on Mirs. We had it, and I was going to bring it tonight, but I forgot. It's not the, the CVS corner, which I call it, the Mirs, and the, the northwest corner, but it's that property along Mirs that people keep trying to put some townhouses on between the apartments and that big square property that they're trying to develop for whatever that they have the development rights for. There's a possibility of, of, in some preliminary talks, it was on our list, of possibly getting that for under the referendum value. It's, it's up now for 475,000, but there has been some indications that some people are, you know, that there is some problems with working out the townhomes on that property, or people trying to look at it. There are some problems, but that would be, depending on what we could talk about under, I just may want to pursue a little further if, if the board has some interest in it. If they don't, you know, if they don't, that's fine. I just want to say, that's brand new that, that we got.
Where is this specifically? I mean, Mirs is a long...
I'll, I'll say it to you tomorrow in case we got to talk about it. There's that corner piece, the corner piece at Mirs and Ultra 19.
Okay.
On the, on the northwest corner. There's a big square piece where, you know, they're going to build something on. That's up for...
Where Wawa was going to...
Where Wawa was going to go. It's up for sale for 1.5 million. That's up, right next to, right in back of it, is a stretch along the water... That's up, right next to, right in back of it is a stretch along the waterway and the canal and stuff that people are.
That's a corner across from the bank they're just building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Down the way, people are trying to market and come to us with sticking in some townhomes along there, which they can probably do, but it has challenges and stuff to it.
Big challenges.
Yeah. So, we could sit by and hope there's so many big challenges, nobody would develop and do it, or we could look at, depending on the price, buying it and then making it a preserve. But if the board's interested, I'd get back with you with more information on that, but.
That's not the medical office corner. It's the strip behind it.
No, it's the one by Green Dolphins.
The entrance, across the street from that.
It starts about where the tennis court.
It's across from the tennis courts.
Across from the tennis courts, that strip along. You got the square, and then you've got a long strip along the canals and I'm sure the preserve ways.
You know who owns that, right?
I found out, I found out, this is what made me, I wanted it badly, and then I found out who owned it, it made me cringe, and we know why.
I'm glad, I'm glad you know that.
I saw that and I inquired if it was the same, and.
It is.
Yes, I know. So, I just wanted to bring that, just bring that up. I don't have a lot of information on it now, but.
And also, I know in fairness, Commissioner Carr brought up a couple of properties.
That was, that was one of them.
Okay, and then there were a couple of others, and you looked into those.
Those weren't, yeah, those weren't the corner. We even acquired again on the corner, the 1.5 million for sale now, that we haven't seen very good ideas of projects going on that corner. But they've indicated they're not talking, they don't want to talk to us now, now.
And which corner is this?
The full northwest corner, the big square in the front where the CVS was gonna go, where the Wawa was then gonna move to from across the street, that corner. So, but we did inquire back, and we heard about the other one being open too, and they're not, they're still trying, but they're not having a lot of success in some of their endeavors. That's why it's still sitting for sale, so maybe we'll wait on and look at.
All right. Let's take it down the line. Vice Mayor Lot, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm good.
You're comfortable with what?
I think.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner.
Well, I'm not making the deal here, but, I mean, the one at the Sponge Docks, I would be in favor of. East Florida, we do need to try to see what we can do with that, cuz that is very important, cuz if we lose it, there's nothing you can do with the stormwater. The 3.2 is at about price range, and, you know, I mean, I don't know, we could use it, but, you know, it's gotta be negotiable, more negotiable than that. And I know you don't want me to make any comment on that strip of land, because I know the real deal behind it.
I just have to bring it forward cuz it.
I hear you, I hear you, I hear you.
Okay. Is that anything else? Okay, Commissioner Kuyas.
I think the Henry Ross property is something we should look into for referendum, as well as Kokoros Park. If we could get it for that price asked, that would be a blessing. I'll just leave it at that. And spoil site, I'm not unsure, just unsure of. I know staff's worked hard on potential third, you know, property for a third boat ramp. Have we made any progress with it?
That's the one, that's the one that we don't have yet, the one appraisal we don't have yet.
Okay.
We're waiting for, we knew that's the Stauffer site, we knew that was gonna be the most complicated all the appraisals, and we just got these two, which are less complex. We just got these the end of last week. So, I'm hoping we promised to get, we were promised to try to get it before the, you know, in mid, beginning mid-September, and when we knew they're a couple of weeks behind, so, you know, I'm hoping this week early, and that's why I've got an item on the agenda for Tuesday in case it comes in, and I can add that discussion with you Tuesday night. I've got a just-in-case agenda item ready to talk to you about. But that's the quote of the talk about possible, the possible boat ramp site, that estimate out there. The one appraisal that we don't have yet of the appraisals we've asked for.
You might want to mention the repairian.
Yes, and we also, we've also got, we've also got attorney working on the repairian rights, the water rights that it was noted the last time that we don't have, so we're waiting for that piece too. And again, this is all complex, not easy for appraisals like this one. That's what's complicating this appraisal, and with the doubling time log of regular ones and coming close to the charter thing, that's the challenges of these appraisals, and especially that one for the potential site for a boat ramp.
Okay. Realistically, if this board said, you know, let's let the voters decide, how many of these properties could be on referendum?
Right now, I'm only thinking, I'm only thinking the Ross property.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, as far as the, but the Ross is because it's over the 350,000 threshold, right?
Yes.
But then if Stauffer came in, that may require us to, you think that one would go to referendum?
Yeah, that would, yeah, I'm sure that one's gonna have to go based on the other prices.
And the strip is under the 350, do you think? The 350 threshold, the strip along mirrors?
It may be. We made the thing, we don't even want to talk until we hear a price under the threshold, and we haven't heard that price yet, so. I just want to make aware that that's been talked to us about, and since it was on the list that Commissioner Carr had, that's why I wanted to bring that forward.
So, you're gonna follow up with that some more?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kuyas, was there anything?
I have no more questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
The Ross, for sure. It's beautiful out there on Florida Avenue. I think we need to preserve that land. If it works for stormwater, that's great. Mr. Ross and his family, the Hoadleys, have been a fixture in this community forever, and I think he actually asked if we would be interested, would prefer the city to own it and preserve it rather than homes being built on, is that correct?
He, yeah, he in fact did that, and with the, you know, obviously, he'll get more money from the home builder, but he actually, if it's, if he could live with the price, he'd rather see that land preserved. So, that's why we're hoping we can, you know.
Of course he would, he lives right next door.
Yep, he does.
The Stauffer, wait for the price to come back for that, but there's still a little homework that has to be done. That one, you know, depending on the price, I've already briefly mentioned it to a couple of the county commissioners in my courtesy call to them when I became elected, and I'm gonna go, I would go back to them with hat in hand, see if they would participate, not just in purchasing the land, but maybe establishing a boat ramp as well. It's a beautiful piece of property. Unless something's changed, it's another one of these things that's under contract, and don't ask about the, it's one of these mysteries that people from the county don't know what that contract is. We don't know what that contract is. There's not been any inquiries at the county or here at the city as far as what you can do with that property. But in all honesty, that may be one of those things, if it comes back reasonably, and because of our deficiency in boat ramps, that may be something that we would want to discuss taking the property through condemnation. Now, I know previous boards have been reluctant or shy about doing that. I'm not. That's the only way we got the library built downtown. That's the only way we got Live Oak Street through, and it was very, it wasn't an adversarial situation. It was done with kind hands and walking everybody through that. And they also had the choice of either selling the property or going through the process of a taking, and some sold it, some decided to do a taking, and they felt that they would get, they would benefit better that way. But it wasn't an adversarial relationship. We didn't have anybody up here yelling at us from the podium or anything like that. And the Stauffer site is owned by Seneca, which is a conglomerate, and I'm not sure that that would be a big deal to them, but that may be something that we'd have to explore. The Kokoros parcel is something that's been on the city's radar, the residents' radar for a very long time. That used to be a park for 30 years. Through the family's generosity, it was available to the city at no cost, I believe, is that right? No, no.
Right.
So, at some point in the past, that changed. We are, we have a deficiency in many parks in our comprehensive plan, so that is justification if we need to, to do a taking in front of a judge. Also, going back to the Stauffer site, if anything moved in that direction, we'd have to have a site plan as well to do that before the judge. We'd actually have to have a plan to show him what we have in mind. So, those things that the city manager identified as far as crossing Ts and Is with repairian rights. Commissioner Eisner, I think you own a boat, maybe going out there with a PVC pipe and checking that out sometimes and see what the water depth is, and if I don't get a chance to do that first, so that would be very helpful. So, I wanted to talk about those. The spoil pond, I want to make sure the residents understand, we're not giving up on the spoil pond, something for the, having the federal channel perpetuity available for putting the spoils there from the dredge. That location is just extremely expensive. There's some lower areas. We're gonna have to do some exploration and maybe find a parcel. There are other parcels, they're low. The residences are gonna be expensive to be built there because they'd have to be built up out of the floodplain. We don't need to worry about that with regard to disposal ponds, so there may be some other options. We've never really explored that, because this one has always been available since the mid-'90s, so we need to do a little more work. The issue, the idea behind the RRO plant that the city manager mentioned, if you recall the last discussion and the approval of the solar panels, there were a couple of questions that came up as far as whether there was room, in other words, making the water plant independent, solar, sustain the plant just on solar itself, and Mr. Smith said, well, we don't have any more room for putting solar panels. So, I, you know, it's just a quick question, the city manager, let's, you know, we've done the appraisal. I know the Stammas family may be willing to work with us, not on the entire site, but it may be something to think about and talk to them a little bit and come back to you about that. If our staff feels that that might be something that we would need in the future, and you're right, if the price is too high, the price is too high. We also have that strip of land across the street that we have just down the road that we purchased for, actually, we changed the land use on it, I think, to be able to use it for a staging area for trucks and things. That may provide a site for solar panels as well, where we can actually bring a cable back to the RRO plant. That's an option too, so it wouldn't just be for the sake of buying land. And then you mentioned the strip, that you're gonna explore that a little more. Okay. As far as the, as far as the referendum, right now, would just be maybe two, no more than three of these that would have to go to referendum. Okay, we'll learn more about that as we go.
Yes.
Is there any objection for the city manager to continue working these properties and providing you information as we go along?
None at all.
Okay. Is that the direction? Okay.
Good.
All right. Okay. Let me see now. All right, with that, any comments on any of these two items? Okay. Let's go to board and staff comments. Chief Young, any comments?
No comments, sir.
Okay. City Manager LaCorus?
No comments.
Ms. Jacobs?
No comments, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lot?
I, you know, we have a lot of things to consider here as both property. I'm for the city manager and investigate all the ones that we've discussed. There's another piece of property on the, and I'm gonna blow this, as far as direction, because I'm direction challenged, the southwest corner of Martin Luther King and Safford, which is currently vacant, I think because they transferred density to the apartment building across the street when they built it.
I know, I know.
I don't really know what the density is left on that property, but it seems to me that when we do things like this, and we have this perfect piece of property that's along the gateway to our town as far as the Pinellas Trail is concerned, we should maybe investigate what might be done with it and see if we could work out some sort of arrangement for it, because I drive by it regularly, it's a gorgeous piece, it's right on the trail, and it's, I mean, it would be a gorgeous thing for a mixed-use development, but I understand the densities off of it, but I'm not quite sure what's left.
Obviously, because the original intention was to do a phase two of, across the street, to do a phase two there, maybe the dense, I'll check into that. I remember the thing, I remember it, cuz I want to get my mom at a time in one place.
I mean, they maintained it well.
Yeah, they maintained.
I sort of had a brief conversation with Renee about it.
Yeah.
And she brought up the fact that it was kept that way because of the density requirements.
I'll look into that, yeah, cuz that's a nice, I wrote that down today.
That's another one we might want to take a look into.
You'll follow up with Vice Mayor Lot?
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Vice Mayor Lot?
No, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Kuyas?
I did want to talk about, I know we talked about the attorney moving forward with RFP, and we do have a packed meeting coming up this Tuesday. When is the proper time to address the emails, and should that be done during a regular session? Should that be done during a special meeting? You know, cuz that could take some time in itself, and just deciding on what this board would think.
Let me just, as far as the attorney and RFP and providing some interim services, that'll be on the 27th. I know, I'm gonna let you talk about that. I know you've done a lot of work on this already with Ms. Lewis, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, that is gonna be on the 27th, both temporary ideas and the RFP. I can tell you, we found a very good one recently done on the other coast of a smaller city that is, she, we had, we had a method, she had a good method, but she found a better one, so that'll have done. The agenda's been, the agenda's been pared down to accommodate all the items that are on there, including the email. So, I think with the pairing down, I don't think, especially if everybody gives us and staff calls early about the other items on the agenda to do, I think it's pared down enough to handle those at the meeting Tuesday night. Again, that's why I sent the reminder, and we put some things out early about the backup.
Commissioner Kuyas may have not seen the draft agenda yet.
You probably, yeah, you probably didn't, cuz we've been working on it, trying to pare it down. It'll come out tomorrow, but you'll see on the agenda, well, you won't see the things we pared away, cuz you don't see them, but you'll see the items on there will accommodate everything that, everything that is on there, especially if we get, you know, the information of some of the items that may have some questions, and we get those questions to staff before the meeting, I think we'll be able to make it through the meeting with how it's structured. We went over that with the mayor to see on the timing of it.
Right. I want to make sure, do you have some thoughts on the, you talking about the emails from the 2017 timeframe, or is that something else?
Yes, I was referring to.
The emails you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have some thoughts or concerns about that, or?
Well, I didn't know how the discussion was gonna go from my opinion. I think it could be, you know, a long discussion, depending on what's read, what's not, what's put into the record, and so I don't know if that's, you know, some of our meetings, just all the regular agendas, takes two to three hours, so that could easily take two hours at least. I didn't know the direction of the board, you know, what you guys thought, if needed to have a separate meeting just to go over it all and just address it.
What, what we could do is, the city manager gave me kind of the tentative agenda this evening, and there's several, there's not several, there's a couple of staff presentations, there's the stormwater presentation that we need to do. I know that city manager's been basically telling the staff to keep that down to a minimum. I'm hoping maybe 10 minutes or 15 minutes at most, and right now, I don't see that's gonna take a great deal of time. The city attorney thing, I would suspect that's gonna be fairly straightforward, do you think, is that correct?
I think it is. Ms. Lewis, and thank goodness for her experience and the foresight of Jay Jacobs to bring her in as a second-in-command to be a lead when he retires, the foresight of that, because, again, in a short amount of time, she's produced a lot, and I think we got a good, we got good temporary measures and a good plan for going forward that you'll see. And you'll see in the back, we're finishing up this evening and gonna finish up in the morning, you'll see the backup on. you'll see the backup on the thing. You'll be, you know, you'll see us, you know, it's not as complicated as I was worried it could be.
Okay. What, what we can do is just give it a try. I understand what you're saying. The, the email issue could be somewhat of a, an involved discussion, not just for the commission, but for residents as well. The problem is we don't really have any other meetings.
Yeah, the problem is like looking for the date for this special meeting. And again, and, and I know some of the items, the commission's a little rushed because this meeting was supposed to be next week, but we had very few days before the end of the month. And then, then we have a commissioner out. So we had to move it up to the day because we had no other place to go. And, and we want to have a full commission when we, we deal with that issue. So that's why, that's why I rearranged the meeting for the twenty-seventh so we can handle it. Because there's just no other date we'd be into mid, mid-October for it. Another date would open up the availability of a full commission. So that's another reason, that, that would have been a thought to do that on a separate meeting. There's just not, there's not, just not the date available. And that's something that can't wait two or three weeks to go. So, so we've tried to accommodate this meeting here and move some items to the eleventh, October eleventh, that we were going to cover that night. Again, we've shortened our presentations up on some of the items. So that's why it's important on the stormwater thing and stuff to call, get with, get with, you know, get with our staff ahead of time because the time will be in your questioning. It's not going to be in the presentations and the staff. It'll be a question and any questions you can get answered before the process, before we get into the meeting and stuff, that'll cut those times. And I think if that's done, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to make it. And there's really no other date to, to move it to before we have a problem with having a full commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The, the, in looking in the agenda, we'll, we'll see how it goes. I mean, the two items that I think are going to be the, the most, the other ones are just going to be sitting, listening and understanding what's being presented. Those are the presentations, those are simple. There may be some resident comments on those. But the two that are going to be complicated and maybe Ms. Lewis, and once we see the backup, we'll be very comfortable with that, would be the attorney issue. And I'm, I'm hoping what we'll do is rather than jumping into something, perhaps setting up some interim services first and then doing an RFP and taking care with selecting another attorney. I know the city manager's already, there, there's a couple of interim measures that are distinct possibilities that carry us over. That's the one, so I'm hoping that'll go fairly easy. The email thing, that's an agenda item that Commissioner Eisner had requested. He's going to basically take the lead on that. And I'm sure the other commissioners will have something to say as well. And I'm, I'm sure a number of the residents will have something to say as well. And, and what I was going to tell you, it isn't going to be a, it isn't going to be one of these eight-thirty and nine o'clock meetings. It, it's going to probably take us all the way to eleven o'clock. My only concern is that, and I shared this with the city manager, is that the email discussion is, we get to it early enough to where people either are still here or they still hear what the commissioner's comments are, knowing that the video could be replayed at any time in the future. But it's still, you know, the key would be not to have it too late where people want to make a comment, but they can't make a comment because they've gone home, it's way past.
I agree, I think that issue is going to be way more controversial than what do we do about a new lawyer? And should we get interim, you know, legal help in the process, which I think is kind of a no-brainer. We have to do it. So if we can get that agenda item as early in the agenda as possible, we know that we get people in here and by nine o'clock, they're wearing out. So.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. What are the thoughts about starting a little earlier?
That's a possibility too.
Can anyone make it earlier?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with starting earlier? Can?
I'm okay with it. Do I get two Snicker bars?
Commissioner Eisner?
I'm not too keen on that. It's my holiday, so I'm kind of cutting the, you know, coming in early any which way.
Because of the sunset?
Oh.
Okay, all right. All right.
I, I, the only thing I could tell you is I can speak quickly.
Yeah. No, I understand. I was going to say, never mind, there, the, let's just start on time.
Okay.
And then we'll just.
And we do have the one presentation off the board, so that helped, that, that gains us twenty minutes in the start time. And we, we gain, we gained twenty minutes in the start because the high school presentation got, got canceled, so.
Okay. And if there's any change that, I'll see if there's anything else that comes up with the city manager. If there's anything else, we'll, city manager will notify everybody on that. So I understand. All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned at eight oh one.